Call the meeting to order, please. This is a Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, April 17th. The time is seven o'clock, and I'd ask you to please call the roll.
President Sussman?
Here.
Trustee Sussman?
Here.
Trustee Collins?
Here.
Trustee Bailey?
Here.
Trustee Collins?
Here.
Village manager Scolera?
Here.
Also President Village Director Bailey. Not with us this evening, Trustee Hamilton, and Village Attorneys Malina and Mars.
Thank you very much. If you'd please rise for the pledge.
(inaudible) United States of America, into the Republic of which stands our nation, without any whistle, the liberty of justice.
Thank you, and welcome to everyone who's joined us tonight and everyone watching at home. If you're here with us and you'd like to make a comment anytime during the meeting, I just ask that you be recognized by the President and that you make your comment from the podium so that the folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. First up this evening is public comment. Did anyone wish to address the board? And I believe, Trustee Sussman, you had a few things that you wanted to mention.
People haven't heard from me in almost a year about the Riverside Arts Weekend, so before any more time goes by, I'd like to make sure everybody puts the weekend of May 17th and May 18th on their calendars. We have about 70 juried artists, we have two full days of performances, free kids' activities, food and drink, anything anybody could ever desire. So, please mark your calendars, and thank you, and thanks to everybody who's been working so hard on it, and everybody who's going to volunteer to work that weekend, folks. And then I'd also like to speak, my, yeah, on behalf of the Riverside Public Library. They are having, I think it's maybe their first large, large fundraiser, May 10th. They're starting off, nobody laughed, they're starting off with a big bingo game, and then they are moving on to dancing in the library. I think it's May 10th. Somebody's looking at me, but it's that Saturday, that's May 10th. So, I looked for it on the website, but I couldn't find it. Anyway, that's another thing to mark your, May 10th, thank you, that's another thing to mark your calendars for, bingo and dancing. That's only second to the Riverside Arts Weekend.
Bingo and boogying, I think.
Oh, bingo and boogying, even better. Does that mean you're going to be there?
Trustee Sussman, if I may, going back to Riverside Arts Weekend, I was impressed by a posting on Facebook, I think it came from the Economic Development Commission, where the Riverside Arts Weekend was rated as one of the top 10 summer activities in the Chicagoland area. Some of the others were Wrigley Field, US Cellular Field, Riverside Arts Weekend.
Thank you, that's right, that's right.
It's impressive.
From Chicago visitors. They ranked us as one of the top 10 things to do. So, yeah, everybody be there.
Yes.
Thank you, thanks, Doug.
You're being, you're being modest, because MSN also picked up RAW.
And MSN also picked up on it.
And it's on their, it's on their homepage now, so, yeah.
And we'll have boogying there, too, so.
Being boogie, that guy. Okay, excellent.
Anything, any other announcements before we move ahead? Next up is the Village President's report, and the first thing I have is a proclamation that I'd like to read honoring Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture the special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce erosion of topsoil by wind and water, purify the air and water by reducing pollution, and create plant and wildlife diversity, and whereas trees have been shown to reduce crime, increase property values, reduce heating and cooling costs, and conserve energy use, and whereas trees can beautify our parks and our streets, improve the quality of our urban environment, and carry on the tradition planned by the inventive vision of Frederick Law Olmsted, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, therefore be it resolved that I, Benjamin Sals, Village President, proclaim the day of April 25th, 2014, as Arbor Day in the Village of Riverside, and I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the protection and care of trees within our community and woodlands. A very nice, a nice day, something to remember. The next thing that is on our agenda, we're going to actually postpone until our next meeting, and it's a recognition of Deputy Chief William Legg, who is retiring after 30 years of service to our village on the Riverside Police Department. He, at the last minute, he got called away on some family issues, so he can't be with us tonight. So, we're going to wait until our next meeting so we can have Deputy Chief Legg here, and we can honor him in person for his extraordinary service. I also have a number of just informational items. This past week, Sandy and Jim Petrazilka organized a meeting of the Visit Oak Park Board on April 16th at the, at the library. It was a really nice meeting. We had everybody come from Oak Park, their visitor center. They were very impressed with our village, and it was a very warm and engaging meeting. And going back to RAW just for a second, the President of that Board made it a point of saying to everyone that was assembled there that RAW was the most impressive, best-run arts bearer that he had ever seen, and he said, as he pointed out, he had been to a lot of them. So, we're very, very proud of RAW. This coming May 7th is the last winter farmer's market. At the train stations and our weekly markets will begin in June. You've already talked about bingo and boogying. The Safe Environment Commission and the Police Department will host a special presentation, Solutions to Human Coyote Conflict. And this, this was an issue that really came to a head last, last fall, and I suspect that with the nice weather finally coming on, this is going to be something that we're going to need to, to be very cognizant of in the, in the months to come. And Lindsay Dasher of the Human Wildlife Conflict Resolution Arm of the Humane Society of the United States is going to be here. It's April 29th at seven o'clock in the township auditorium, and she will discuss effective and humane solutions to human wildlife conflicts, and especially with a special emphasis on the influx of coyotes within our communities. So, if you're interested in that topic and you'd like to hear from a nationally renowned expert on that, I encourage you to, to come out for that on April 29th. The, the last thing I just want to mention, this was a big week for Riverside. This week, the Governor and Secretary of Transit, Secretary of Transportation Anne Schneider, announced two awards that were given to Riverside totaling about $1.6 million. These are grants that we had been very actively pursuing. One of them is for the renovation of our train station. We received $818,000 for the train station renovation. That has been a multi-year process that we've been, that we've been trying to get that for quite a while. And then the other $760,000 is for the Streetscape Grant for Burlington that's going to allow us to completely revamp and renovate Burlington Street in our central business district. And I just want to, to specifically thank a number of people, I mean, of course, Governor Quinn and Secretary Schneider for granting us the award. I, I think it's especially worthy to note there that in granting the award, they made specific mention of both the historic aspect and beautification aspect of the awards. And just personally, it means a lot to me that we have someone in those positions that have the vision and the appreciation for something that Riverside really stands for, and that's the civic importance of historic preservation and beautification. So, it was a great honor to receive that. The effort by our staff, especially with regard to the Streetscape application, was extraordinary. And Manager Scolera and Director Bailey, who is here, really did an outstanding job putting together in very short order the application for the grant for the Streetscape, the application for that. And there were 232 applications submitted requesting over $260 million in, in grant funds. Only 71 awards were made. We received two of them. We were the fifth highest recipient of grant, grant funding in this round of funding, and that is a testament to the hard work and extraordinary work of our, of our staff. And I also want to specifically thank our legislators. It was really extraordinary with regard to the Streetstate, Streetscape Grant. Everyone from Senator Durbin all the way down through all those state senators, all the state representatives, down to Representative Zaleski and Tavoris and Hernandez, every single one of those people supplied letters of support for us with regard to, to the Streetscape. And of, and a specific importance was Senator Sandoval, who is the chairman of the Transportation Committee, and he championed both the Streetscape Grant and the Train Station Grant on our behalf, so we're very, very grateful for that. So, we have a lot of work coming up in the, this coming summer and fall where we will actually move forward about preparing a final plan for the downtown area. And there will be extreme effort made to, to hear from everybody involved, from our commissions to our residents, lots of input. If we're going to do this right, we, our goal is to make this a, a real, a real cutting-edge example of sustainable green infrastructure. So, it's, they're exciting days here in Riverside. And that is my report. I will turn it over to you, Mr. Scolera.
Just to piggyback on to the Arbor Day proclamation, the event will take place on Friday, April 25th, beginning at 3:00 PM and ending around 5:00 PM. And our village forester, who is here in attendance, along with anyone who, who comes to participate, will be planting approximately 15 black willow trees around the Displanes River for Arbor Day. I also wanted to alert the community that on Saturday, May 3rd, there will be a Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day, taking place at Moraine Valley Community College at 900 West College Parkway in Payles Hills. Information was sent out via Eflash, and I believe we also have this on our website if you are interested in the different materials that you can take to the site to remove from your, your basement or garage. On Tuesday, April 22nd, State Representative Zaleski will be holding a town hall meeting here in the Riverside Village Hall from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. And then also, as a follow-up to last meeting, I have, Public Works Director and I have met with our village engineer, who will be looking at Swan Pond and providing the village with some ideas on, on work that can be done to shore up the embankment, as well as any work within the park itself, to help evaluate whether the grading, which was a question that was raised at the last meeting, is, has been changed, that it retains more water for a longer period of time. So, we will have a report as soon as that is ready to be released to the, to the board. I also have reached out to the Army Corps in regards to the plantings directly at the mouth of the culvert. I indicated to them that it had moved during this recent ice storm, so they are going to be letting me know sometime early next week, a date where they will be coming out to walk Swan Pond with us, and, and at that time, we will point out to them areas of concern that we have as a result of the work that was completed in there, and hopefully partner with them to remedy some of the issues that we do have in Swan Pond. And finally, I just wanted to inform the board that the Community Development Director search has been completed, and a offer has been made to Sonia Apt from the Village of Bartlett, who serves as their village planner. Sonia is following a, a search of, in which we received 34 applicants for the position. We interviewed five, and then we narrowed it down to the three, and following input from staff, and doing reference checks and a background check, Sonia, we feel is the most qualified individual to meet the needs of the village moving forward. Sonia is going to begin her employment with us on May 5th. So, we will bring her to a meeting and introduce her to the community, but Sonia has been chosen, and we are all excited at the new hire. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda, are there any items that need to be removed for discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion and a second for approval.
So much.
Motion by Ms. Sussman, second by Mr. Ballerine. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Bailey?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Motion carries.
Next up are reports of departments and commissions. We have three this evening. The first two by Police Weitzel, who's going to talk about our annual report and all about, also about some traffic enforcement efforts. Chief Weitzel.
Mr. President, and trustees, and manager Scolera, we should have in front of you our 2013 annual report. I would just like to hit on a few high points, and then if anybody has any questions, I'll answer them. And starting off, I would like you to know that this entire document is the work product of my administrative assistant, Pamela McCall. She started in early January by collecting data, going through records in the department in our computer system, and collecting photographs for the document. It was her desire this year to put more photos in and less data, so that it would be more appealing and not just filled up with numbers. In the report, it details that for calls for service for 2013, we had 14,021. Those are total police calls for response. They can range from anything from a dog call to a very serious violent crime. One of the big initiatives that we finished in 2013 was these new radios we got for our radio system. Our, our police dispatching is now on an encrypted system. The radios that were purchased, we got a grant from Cook County for $130,000. They're $7,000 a radio, because they're interoperable, that's really what the expense is. The entire expense was paid for the Department of Homeland Security by Director Michael Masters was the, behind that. It really was a two-year project, but we finished it up in 2013, as did every agency that's on our frequency. That includes Riverside, North Riverside, Lyons, Stickney, Forestview, and McCook, and the Brookfield Zoo. All the communities got the same grant, and all the communities are on our same frequency now, operating on that same radio frequency. We got another tobacco grant, and we're 100% compliant in 2013 with that tobacco grant. As far as our enforcement efforts go, the department wrote over 5,600 total citations in 2013. That included state citations where motorists had to go to court, local ordinance citations, parking citations, and compliance citations. We had 279 auto accidents in the village in 2013. The department made 466 criminal arrests, which required the defendants to be booked or held in custody by the police department, which is a very large number for an agency our size. We had 53 juvenile arrests in 2013. Thirty-four of those were repeat offenders, which is an extremely high number for us. 1,800 hours of total training for the department as a whole, that included in-service training and training that we sent officers out of how, out of the department to be trained by other experts. For the first time ever, our police explorer post took home two awards at the Springfield Conference. They placed second and third respectively in firearms and traffic stops. And our special traffic enforcement for 2013, which we call the Intensified Enforcement Program, on that program alone, the department wrote 663 citations, and that's where we respond to residents' complaints via email or phone calls, or in some kind, they come in the police lobby and ask us to take down notes. And then sometime during the year, we go out and concentrate on those areas specifically to what the resident may have told us, speeding, stop sign violations, pedestrian crosswalks. And the volunteer work that was done by the police department this year, I'm proud to say that the bike rodeos or any of the community events, the farmer's market where we had, were all volunteer. Not one officer put in overtime for any of the volunteer work that was performed by the police department this year. They wanted to give back to the community, which I was very happy to see. And going forward, we're going to probably keep this format, and by the next week, I'll have the report available at the library, on our village website, and in the lobby of the police department. But if any board member has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just wanted to say, I thought this was very readable. She did a really nice job. If you would pass along our thanks, it was a very nice report, I thought.
I didn't, I didn't really focus on that, the one item about the volunteerism of your officers. That's extraordinary. Please pass along our thanks and congratulations to them for doing that. That really is quite a testament to the kind of people we have on our force.
Thank you.
I was a little surprised on how many speeding tickets we give on Woodside. I mean, if you consider Woodside and Displanes the same street, it's over 200.
Yes. Well, we, you know, it's, some residents will call it a speed trap. I don't, I don't use that terminology, but a lot of the residents on the 100 block of Woodside, that, that block basically between the school and 31st Street, are constantly asking us to enforce the speed specifically on both north and southbound, especially in and around the school times, either at dismissal or at drop-off. Many of them have written emails that when they drop kids off, they accelerate and go, go northbound on Woodside, and actually, in some of the emails I've received, the residents are believing they're getting to 40 to 45 miles an hour, and they're right, from the tickets that I see written. And then there are also residents, their parents specifically, they say, that come down and try to drop their kids on Kimbark, and are either obstructing traffic, or in some cases, speeding to get their kids to school. So, we have concentrated over there.
Chief, I noticed that there was over a 50% increase in misdemeanor, misdemeanors. Could you just refresh my memory, please, on what a misdemeanor offense is?
Both are, any crime that, the Class A misdemeanor, for example, is, if you're found guilty, you could get up to a year in prison and fined, but also more common for misdemeanors is some type of supervision or probation. And the, you know, the, the state's attorneys in Cook County don't make decisions on that. The Cook County State's Attorney's Office has to approve all our felonies, so the misdemeanors are all charged locally. The officers themselves can decide what misdemeanor crime they're going to charge somebody with. But what happens is, a lot of the times, the state's attorneys will not approve certain felonies, so then it automatically drops down to a misdemeanor. So, our misdemeanors did go up because we had less felonies approved, not at our level, at the Cook County State's Attorney's level. And our volume was up.
And they were in which categories primarily?
Battery, domestic battery, unfortunately, misdemeanor thefts. And juvenile crimes get reported to the state, so those would be, if we had a juvenile arrest at one of our schools and it was a misdemeanor, it still goes down as a crime and is reported to the state. So, even if an arrest is not made in Illinois, but the crime occurs, you must report the crime. So, if a resident reports that they were burglarized, but they don't, they think their next-door neighbor's kid did it, for example, we still have to report that crime by law. You cannot, even though they don't want to prosecute, because the, Illinois says the crime occurred, just because you don't want to prosecute doesn't mean that the act didn't happen. That's not true in all states, but in Illinois, that's the way we have to report our crime. They believe it's a truer, truer documentation as to what crime is actually occurring, that agencies only reported the ones that were arrested. You'd see crime substantially lower.
Thank you.
So, the next topic that Chief Weitzel is going to talk to us about is our special traffic enforcement efforts, and this follows, just to, as a refresher to the folks watching at home, this follows on our discussion a few meetings ago about, in 2006, there, there was an ordinance passed that would have allowed park zones, speed zones, within our village. In order to do that, it would require upwards of 60 to 80 new signs to be put up around the park zones. So, this board asked our police department to go back and, and offer some recommendations, and Chief Weitzel is going to do that for us.
Yes, Mr. President, I, I, after the meeting we had before, where my memo on the park zones, I went back and talked to my staff. I consulted with Director Bailey and the village manager on what we could do to come up with an alternative. Director Bailey helped me with a GSI map that's included in your packet. Initially, the director did 1,000 feet of the school for the school zone signs. Then I checked the state statute, and the state statute actually is 500 to 600 feet, and then it says, "and/or," it can be greater than that if a professional traffic engineer did a study of the school and recommended a broader range than the 500 to 600 feet. So, we put the map back to 600 feet being the maximum, and we, all of the current school signs are within the 600 feet, except for one by the Riverside Presbyterian Preschool, and one by Ames. What we would have to put in to get all the current signs, and then the school zone sign, school zone ahead signs were in compliance. So, then I went to my staff and said, you know, what could we, you know, there'd be, to do the park zone, we'd have to put in a large amount of signage. And actually Deputy Chief Legg remembered when, in 2006, when the board was, put the first ordinance into place, he actually dug up a memo for me that the former chief had written, instructing us not to enforce it until the signs went up, and then this, the signs never went up. So, it just, well, it went dormant. So, my proposal was to, we already, like in the school zones, we'll, we're doing a school zone operation, we'll write everybody that violates the law, whether it's cell phone, texting, speeding, illegal parking, because in front of Hauser Central, parking is a big issue, the double parking, just as much as the car is moving, it's the car's double parking. But I came up with, we would issue a directive, a written directive, to put into our policy manual book that would say that if we make a traffic stop in the school zone, and/or a road adjacent to a park where children are present, the officers will issue the citation, and they will note on the citation, the area, and there's a little box, plus there's a little line that officers routinely fill in information so that they can refresh their memory in court, because sometimes the tickets don't go for two months. And we would put in their park zone, we would put in their school zone adjacent, children playing, and then that, when that ticket is in front of our local prosecutor, and it's in front of the judge, he would be able to see it. And hopefully, the judge would take a look at that and do a little bit more harsh penalty and not dismiss them. And I'm specifically talking like speeding, like say 7 miles over the speed limit. Routinely, the judges will dismiss those, but they usually don't, they're going to dismiss those probably on, you know, Harlem and Ogden and First Avenue and 31st Street, and maybe Woodside, because they don't feel that that's enough to find somebody. But they may have a different opinion on, right in front of the schools, or Berry Point, or, or Fairbanks, maybe in the 100 block, if it's a Saturday and the kids are playing in Swan Pond, for example, or there's some event going on. So, with that, I called the Cook County State's Attorney's Office and talked to our prosecutor, and they had no problem with it. And our local prosecutor said, just give him a copy of the directive, and when he goes to court with our officers, every time he goes to court, he has a little file of all the copies of all the tickets we issued, and he'll have that in there, so every time he's up there, he'll inform the judge that, you know, this ticket was written in front of Hauser, this one was written in front of Ames School. Now, the judge could still do what he wants, but everybody agreed that they probably would do some type of finding on that. And that would alleviate the park zone, because we wouldn't have to put the signs, and we'd get the same, the same enforcement. I just wouldn't put that directive for other streets. I'm not going to tell my officers to do that on Harlem and Ogden and, and 31st and those, those roadways, because judges will throw those cases out. I have personally been in court where the judge has taken a ticket and said, "How many individuals in this room have a ticket for under 11 miles the posted speed limit? Please stand," and maybe 10, 15, 20 stand, and he brings them all up, and they mass-dismiss those tickets, right there. So, that serves no purpose. We're paying officers overtime to be in court, and they're doing the enforcement, and there's really no benefit, unless you're thinking that the benefit for just the stop itself is a benefit, because the police car has an officer stopped, and other cars see him stopped, and maybe get the message. I also have the availability, we do have the availability to have warning tickets. The department does have tickets in our Spillman system that can be issued and then tracked within our Spillman computer-aided dispatch system, and they can be purged at a later date, so we didn't keep people's warning tickets on, you know, three or four years from now. Our system would show somebody with a warning ticket. We wouldn't want to do that. We'd want to purge it, like after a year, because we routinely get background requests for people that, residents that are going for a job for a security clearance, and you wouldn't want that on the computer system to, that wasn't really even a penalty. It would be more for our in-house records. But we do have the availability to do that, and we could do that. We haven't done that in the past, because it just hasn't been the policy to the We haven't done that in the past, because it just hasn't been the policy of the department, but the system, the, the computer system does have that. And it, and it's available to the officers in their laptop computers in the squad cars. So, that's another alternative. And then my final alternative, as I was doing some research, may not seem like a very big idea, but this, we have this Twitter account, and we have about 700 or 800 people signed up. And I was looking, and in the West Coast and the East Coast, it's very common that they advertise their speed enforcement zones and where they're working. And so, I called out there to a chief through the International Chiefs Association. They said, "What they do is, they, they, they send out an eflash, or their version of an eflash, or they send out a text message that says, 'Today from 9:00 to 6:00, we're working stationary radar on Woodside.'" And then what happens is, they, they forward that to all their friends. And their friends either avoid that street, or they slow down when they travel. And the chiefs, the chief I talked to out on the West Coast says it's been very, very successful for them. You know, now that, I, the chief I talked to was a town of about 25,000, but I thought that was comparable for the West Coast. But, and then I did the research here in Illinois, and I, I find nobody doing that. But I found that idea to be intriguing, that people would, because our, our goal is to have the reckless driving stop. So, if they're avoiding us and going somewhere else, then we are accomplishing something. I think that, that's a goal. So, I would incorporate that into our program. So, that's really the, the, what's in this memo, behind this memo, and I was hoping that that's the way we, you, the board would decide to go. If that's the way you would decide to go, after discussing with the manager, he felt that the ordinance should be repealed, if that's the way the board does. And then I'll issue those directives, and I will make quarterly reports to the manager, so that he can see the breakdown of tickets we're issuing in school zones and issuing adjacent to parks, so you can get a clear indication of what's happening.
How many, how many signs would you, do you plan on putting up any additional school zone signs, is my question?
Yes, I think we would have to put up the one near the school, the Presbyterian Church, and then the one on the Ames cutoff that comes from, I think that's Northwood is where we're missing one.
Okay. What, and, and, I remember we discussed First Avenue, that's got to be done by IDOT.
Correct.
We'll, we'll make sure that that gets put up.
Yes, and, and, you know, we could, like they said at that meeting we had, we, we could, if the, the board is, they're not going to have us, they're, they're not going to pay for it, but that type of speed sign that's on Berry Point Road now, the electronic one, I mean, I was here, and IDOT said that if we put in a permit, they would consider putting some type of device like that in probably the southbound lanes of First Avenue along the zoo fence line. So, if that's something we want to go with, then I'll find out for the, what the permit process is, once that project gets going, and we'll submit, we'll submit a permit for that. And then I'll just have to find the funding. But we were able to find grant funding for the one on Berry Point, and the township just gave us funding for that traffic data collection box. So, if the village couldn't afford it out of our current budget, we would seek grant funding from anywhere we could find, get it.
What about Fairbanks along Swan Pond?
Um, we, for the electronic sign?
No, for the school zone sign.
Um, that's farther than, well, you could put one in as you're coming around the Fair, uh, the Fairbanks towards back, towards the Berry Point, uh, no, yeah, towards Berry Point, towards the Presbyterian Church. But there is one across from the house, right on the corner. That's within the 400, the 500 to 600 zone.
That, that covers all of, you know, Swan Pond right there.
Yeah. The, where, the where it doesn't have one is when you come from the bridge and you take that right-hand turn, but that's, that's farther out. That's, that, that is way more distance than the 500 to 600 feet. And that actually isn't classified as a school zone there.
Other questions?
I just, out of curiosity, the tweeting that you talked about, I understand the example that you gave about California when there's construction going on, and there's a temporary slower than the posted limit.
Yes.
That's going on, but this was curious to me, at least for me. I, I was a little counterintuitive, because here you're telling people that you're actually enforcing what's a legal speed limit. So, that just doesn't cause people to speed when they don't get a tweet from you?
Well, what it does is, like, if we were doing a specialized enforcement on, take Fairbanks Road, this, the legal speed limit's 25.
Right.
So, we don't, what you do is, you put that today between 9:00 and noon, we will have, we will be working stationary radar on the 100 block of Fairbanks. And what they said has happened is, at least for the tweeting, they send it out to all their friends. But that, that municipality also puts it on their website, they broadcast it out, and they have found that they have written, written less tickets there, but they've also got into compliance, which the chief told me is really what you want to do. You want the compliance of the reckless driving and the speeding, because they're avoiding that area. Now, is it pushing it to another area? It kind of depends on the roadway, where you're talking about.
But my question was more about, once that period is over, don't people just go back to, because you're warning them, so, once the period's over, as opposed to surprising somebody, don't they just go back to driving quickly?
He, he didn't think so. He thought that it was, it was, they realize it's specialized enforcement that moves around. So, they may, you know, it depends on how much they're sending on, but they may go back, but you are getting more compliance than you are in the normal. And, and maybe that's why, I, quite honestly, I could not find a single police agency doing it in Illinois, so, you know, we would be breaking some ground here, but we're certainly not breaking ground nationwide. There are plenty of other police departments doing that.
Thank you.
One other question, I should ask this 10 minutes ago. The recent news in the paper about the layoff in Lyons Police Department?
Yes.
How does that affect the surrounding communities with mutual aid and things like that?
It has the potential to affect us. I have met with my neighboring chiefs already, and we've had discussions amongst ourselves. And then we had a discussion with the former chief before he retired. And then that was a quick retirement there, and then, they, they don't have a current police chief. Their village manager is now the, the acting chief, from my understanding. But we all met to see if their caseload was going to affect us. Now, we already assist each other on emergency situations, so nobody wanted to stop doing that. And it's pretty clear what an emergency is. What we don't want to do is pick up their daily routine calls, and none of the chiefs that I talked to want to do that. And that has not occurred yet, but certainly, it has the potential. So, we're going to meet again in a month as a group of chiefs, and after, because we met before they put the cuts into effect, and we're going to see if there's any call load difference on all our departments for what we would consider to be routine calls for assistance, not an emergency call.
Other questions?
Back to the, when you issue a ticket, is the patrolman required to appear in court?
Yes.
He is?
And in some cases, when you work the deep, the special detail, if the officer's working the radar, all we need is him. If there's another officer working the radar with a chase car farther down making the stop, usually, well, if they're being represented by a lawyer, a good lawyer will make both individuals be there, but a judge will usually want both officers there, the one that was running the radar to testify, and the one that actually committed the stop.
Could we choose not to have them go to court, or would there be a consequence from the court for not sending someone? So, that they could just dismiss it, the officer doesn't show up, it's dismissed?
No, they would sanction us. They, they issue us-
They would sanction us, okay.
-two traffic court dates a month, the first and third Friday, and the officers, we break the department up into two. They are required to be there. They're only not required to be there if they wrote no citations for that period, and that's never happened, that I've had an officer that wrote zero. But they, the chief judge in our district would send me a very nasty letter and sanction me for not having our officers there.
So, then you're, you're actually looking for our points of view on which of those options to proceed with?
Yeah, because then I, what I'll do is issue, I'll put a directive out to my personnel.
Okay, now, I guess I'll start. I'm, I, for some of the reasons that you explained, I, my preference at this point would be to go with several citations prior to issuing a ticket. I think citations in themselves, particularly when, when our police officers would still be checking licenses, right?
Correct.
And license plates, would, could be a deterrent, deterrent. And then, that would also save some of the overtime and the risk of having, say, a first offense dismissed i- in court. That would be my personal preference. The tweeting, I'm okay with.
You're issuing warnings, right?
The, I'm sorry, not citations, the warnings, issue, sorry. Issue two or three warnings before an actual ticket citation, I'm sorry, citation is written.
In those specific zones?
In those specific zones, right. Because I think, as I said, that does two things. It certainly is a warning for people who think that it doesn't matter. And second, if there's, if there really are people who are speeding because their license, because they shouldn't, they shouldn't be driving in the first place, their license has been revoked, or they've got a string of these kinds of citations, that would also come up with your officers as they put it into the system.
And I would inform them, that would only be like 10 or 11. On any, any car that stopped going over the accepted limit that the court takes, we're going to issue the citation.
Oh, sure. No, I meant for this, anything over the 25 mile.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions before we go around some more, because it's on this point of the warning tickets. First, the, you said that we have the capability of keeping the warnings, tickets in our, in our system. Are those admissible in court once you issue a citation? Can the judge be made, made aware that, yes, this, this is a citation, but they had two prior warnings prior to a citation being-
They are, but the weight that that would, the judge, it's up to the judge what weight he would put in, but we can introduce that as evidence, yes.
And the other question, I mean, you, I mean, you're really kind of breaking the town up into two different areas. You're talking about the areas that are, that are adjacent to schools and parks where, where children might be present or, or present. But the other areas of town also have speeding problems. Do you, do you think it's effective to stop and warn folks? Does that have a longer-term effect on, on actually slowing people down? That's, that's the first question. And the second question is, what about the stop sign problem? The famous Riverside stop where people just roll through? How do the judges handle that, if you, if you issue citations for failure to stop?
Well, the first part is that they, that, that, my memo only does pertain to the school zone, park zone, and I do think that the other areas within the village, we should just do as we normally are doing, because they're, they're likely to, they're never going to accept a ticket on one of those busier streets that's under 11. They never, it'll be dismissed outright. I, it, now, does it serve a purpose to make that stop and warn, and have the driver warned and see, you know, he's on a traffic stop for five, six minutes, and other cars see that that area's being patrolled for speed enforcement? There's a, that's a valid reason. I do believe it slows people down, especially motorists that travel the same way every day. They will slow down. I think all of us know where certain police cars sit on our travels. I think we do slow down. The stop signs is a very, if it's a Hollywood stop, you know, judges will ask the officer, "Did you come to a complete stop?" "Yes." They just want a yes or no. Say no, they'll usually fine the individual. I can tell you that I received the most stop sign violation request for enforcement anywhere along Della Plain Road, from Lionel, all the way to where it comes back up at 31st and First. They, the, the, the stop signs along that area there, especially during rush hours between 4:00 and 6:00, and in the morning, when people are going to and from work, that's where we receive the most concerns from our residents, is, "Please sit on this stop sign." And you know what happens? Here's a classic example. The officer sits there in a marked car, and they stop. The minute we go, they, they come up. So, the effect is that the officer is there. It's almost like the effect of the traffic stop, when he's there and his lights are on and he's pulled somebody over. They slow down when that happens. I could tell you that after we worked that stop sign for an hour, you know, an hour or two later, I might get an email saying they're back at it again. So, we try to move our resources around, because I have to do this tracking enforcement in addition to answering the calls for service and all the rest of, of the duties that the officers have to handle during the day.
And here's your first tweet, Officer Simpson stands at that Lionel every day.
I think, I think the residents come out and give them water and coffee when they're there. But, yeah, that's, that's, and we used, and, and you know, we had a lot more complaints from them. I don't know if you remember, when we, we did the test through the State Environment Commission of not, of the Lionel and Ogden. Well, that opened the floodgates for a lot of motors that wanted to come through, so the residents said, you know, "You need to really put a, put an emphasis back into here, because when you opened it up, it caused a lot of problems." So, we're back there again.
Well, I, I'm, my, my hunch is, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I, I imagine that we are in agreement with the idea of, of giving citations for, for any amount over the speed limit when children are present, both either in school or park zones. Is that correct?
Giving warnings, just going right to citations.
Giving straight to citations, if children are, if children are, if children are present? If, if children are present?
Yeah, I think I would, no?
At any amount of speed?
Pardon?
At any amount of speed, that's, I think that's the question, is, is above or below the 11 mile?
Well, if it's over 10, they can issue the citation.
Citation on demand.
The question is whether it's somebody 7 or 8.
We're talking between 26 and 31 or whatever, I can't.
But I guess my concern was whether or not they were, how much officer time was going to be kept, was going to be spent going to court and having them dismissed, but you don't think they will be dismissed if it's carefully noted, yeah?
It's carefully noted, and there is room on those tickets for that. I can't speak to what a judge will do, but in most cases, if there's a special circumstance, at least they take a closer look at it. Because you got to remember, on our court dates, a judge can have 200 individuals in front of him for a month. We might have issued 200 citations in the last 30 days. And sometimes, they move very quickly through the court call, so if they see something that sticks out, a lot of times, they will stop and handle it differently.
Okay, well, then that's-
If, if we have one citation, he has to go to court, or if we have 100, he has to go to court. So, he's there anyway.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
The other question is, I mean, back to 172 citations on Woodside, I mean, I see where the policeman sits. He sits right after the car, so he's within the 600 feet. So, a good portion of those, I mean, if, if he's only issuing now at 10 or above, and now he has the right to, you know, he's going to start issuing below, that 172 could, could, could double.
Yes.
Very quickly.
If that's the case, I'm sure I'll be in front of the board next year at the annual report, and I'll even submit more detailed reports to the manager. I suspect those will go up substantially. See, officers before were afraid to go, because they were chastised in open court by the judges to not, you know, this is ridic, you know, they would tell them, "This is ridiculous." Well, you know, in our town, it's a little different, because the way that the municipality is laid out here, you know, it's not the grid pattern that they're used to dealing with in some of these communities. Now, some of the judges that live in town here take a different approach, though. We have two judges that live in town here that work over at the traffic court in Maybrook, and, you know, they have, they, they have the firsthand knowledge of the way that the village is laid out. So, you know, going 25 to 30 around Fairbanks Road is different than going 25 or 30 down Burlington or Harlem. It's not, it's not the same.
Last question, you, you touched briefly on parking in front of Hauser Central. You know, in the morning, it's one way, so people park facing north.
Yes.
At, at whatever time it turns back into a two-way street, and I don't know what time that, like, 4:30, okay? There are still cars on the west side of the street-
Yes.
-that face north.
Yes.
When there's cars now coming.
Those are two ways.
But that, that, that's got to, that, 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 I, I, when I come by through there at 5:00, and there's still cars facing me, it, 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 it causes-
Confusion?
Yeah.
Can you slow down, Judge?
I only go 25.
You know, that, all those, all those people on the west side are supposed to be staff, and most of them are, because you'll see identifiers in their, in their windshield. They're supposed to have those cars moved by then, but, you know, faculty gets held over longer, you know, they're not all out of there. I would, I could, to alleviate that, I could write a letter to the superintendent over there saying, you know, "Please inform your staff to try to get their cars removed either by four," because by then, they could move them into the parking lots. I mean, there'd be spaces. So, the, the, the teacher could go out and just move it into the back of the school. So, I'll follow up with the superintendent on that issue.
Okay, so, so I think we're in agreement about the, the school zones and the park zones. What about the, the issue of warning tickets? What do you think of? And it seems to me, Chief, that really comes down to a manpower, a personnel decision in terms of the hours and all for you to make. I mean, if you think it's, if you think it, it helps, or-
It is a man, you know, sometimes we don't have any availability. Sometimes warning tickets can work just to change an attitude, a driving attitude is what I'm speaking of. But I think that we should use those a little bit, not as often. I think those should be, you know, officers make thousands of traffic stops a year. I think we could leave the judgment up to them. In that situation where it's not over the speed limit, we could leave an officer judgment on whether they, they could do that. leave an officer judgment on whether they, they could do that. And I just wanted the board to know, it doesn't go anywhere. It's kept in-house. And we would not keep those records forever. We would purge those records so that, you know, our residents wouldn't have a, their record in there for some moving violation, minor moving violation, three years down the line or something.
And, and everything that we're talking about here also takes place within the, the larger context of the, of the enhanced enforcement that you're already doing in, in twenty-fourteen with the Wolfpack enforcement and that kind of thing.
And we just did that last week as a matter of fact. And the new, actually, the, the biggest, the, the ticket I'm seeing with the most increase is the cell phone violations. So I don't know about you, but I see them every day on my way home. So, but my officers, you know, see them all the time. And, and they stop individuals and they still don't know it's against the law. At least that's what people are telling them. They didn't even know, even with all the publicity that's out there. But it's a, it's a stop that can be made without any other reason, which is unusual. There's only about two or three of those laws that allow us to make the stop without having another violation committed.
And with regard to the tweeting, I mean, I would say let's leave it up to our, our police department. And if you think it's worth trying, try it.
If it doesn't work, we could change. It was just a, an idea, kind of thinking out of the box. And I, and I happened to, at the chief's conference, I have to, happened to talk to a chief from out of state. And he was just telling me what he did to try, he was trying every method he could to reduce the volume of traffic and reckless driving. So I thought that was a really good idea, at least something to try.
Well, that was the next question. Is it the consensus of the board that will have, have this ordinance repealed? Any other questions for the chief? Mr. Pollard?
I just wanted to go back quickly to the school and park zones. Generally speaking, I, I, you know, if you're speeding in a school and park zone, children are present, to me, that's a no-brainer. You issue a ticket. But I think there's always going to be some judgment on the officer's part. You know, going five miles per hour in front of Hauser and Central at three-thirty is a whole lot different than going five miles per hour over the limit by Turtle Park when there's one kid on the far side of the park.
Correct.
You know, and maybe the motorist doesn't even see the, the child. So the, the officer's always going to have some discretion.
You're right. And they have discretion every day now. I mean, I, it, my written directive will give them, you know, directives are really meant as orders, but they're guidelines. I wouldn't want my officer to become a robot.
Exactly. And that's the only reason I spoke up is, you know, there's always a little bit of discretion there.
I agree with you.
You know, the degree of the hazard is really the key. And so, yeah, that's all I, otherwise, I, I appreciate, you know, the work you put into this. And I think I'm very comfortable with it.
So do you have from us what you need?
Yes. And I will follow up with the village manager with everything that, once it's completed.
This is very fine work as usual. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have to, we'll have to bring back an ordinance to repeal.
Can I ask something?
Of course. Please.
Detective O'Beal. Dallas, Betty, one eleven, Woodside. My apartment is like the control tower for this whole Woodside school thing. Out of three sides of my windows, I see the playground, the driveway between our building and the school, and Woodside and Kimbark. When the police pull down cars going south and they stop over on Kimbark, which is really a one-lane street when anybody's parked on it, that creates a big problem. So I don't think that, I think you should let them go further down Kimbark if they're going to pull them off when they, when they stop them right there past the stoplight. And the other thing that has been created, I mean, of course, we have these signs that say absolutely positively, never can you park on this side of the street in front of there. If you're not going to enforce them, why don't you tear the signs down? Because they're just, you know, it's nonsense. I mean, there's cars there parked usually do, double twice a day. I have a hell of a time to get in my driveway because they put this, the no, the one-way sign further than the corner out there. And my driveway is past the corner, so I have to sort of maneuver around to get in. But what's happened is, the cars are now coming to school to unload kids in the morning from Akinside. And then they drive across the playground to a certain point, about halfway across, and they let the kids out. And then those cars take off and they go like hell across. And they make a, a right turn, they run up to our fence, and they, they go out there. And I, I think you ought to put an unmarked car in there in the morning when they're dropping off those kids and just watch what's happened. Because I bet you they, they hit thirty miles an hour after they drop the kid off, going north on the playground. And then they take a, a left and they parallel on driveway and they go out there. And then when they come to, to the, to Woodside, where do they go? Because they have to make a right turn to get out of there. And you have all this traffic coming up Woodside for the school, the kids that are dropped off in front. And then they want to turn left to go down Kimbark. There's ones coming out of the school thing. And so, and, I mean, the horns and the crap that goes on in there in the morning, you can't believe it. And this is every morning, five days a week. Not tomorrow because they're off. But it's, it's, that, that, that drop-off thing on the school, some kid's going to get killed out there when those snow piles were there and these cars were diving around. And they keep parking the cars to where the one at the end can hardly get around. It's, it'd be worth making a movie up there in the morning. We call it the Parade of the SUVs. And my wife does that little song for it, right, with our breakfast every morning. So something ought to be done about those people taking off across the, I mean, a, a police car is the only thing that's going to make them go slower. Because the minute they got rid of Junior, they haul ass. And then they got to make this left to come out onto the street. And then they got to right and they got to meld into the traffic. So it's probably the worst corner in the world, you know, in the morning. So, and I don't say much you can do about it, but, but somebody ought to look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Betty.
And then you issue over a hundred and ninety parking tickets at Hauser Central alone. That does include Akinside. But also, as the manager and the public works director, we, there may be some solutions to Hauser Central in the future because they're doing a professional traffic engineering study right now. So maybe when that document is produced, there'll be some resolutions or improvements to the flow of traffic. But that is being studied.
Thank you, Chief. Next up is a report by Public Works Director Bailey and our village forester, Mike Collins. I asked them to come in. We all know about the ravages of this past winter and what it took. Swan Pond and other areas in our town in terms of our, our forestry and our green spaces. So I asked them to come in and, and just give us an update on their plans going forward for both forestry and green space management. So Director Bailey and Forester Collins?
Good evening, everyone. I tend to view public space management holistically, some of the parts add up to a whole, the emphasis on public safety and aesthetics.
Clearly, the parts should add up to a, a safe, attractive environment. And I also view the, view the, the environment having two different, two major aspects to it. One is what I would refer to as the hardscape, which is, you know, the streets and the signs and hard, man-made structures. And deteriorated infrastructure or poorly main, poorly maintained infrastructure has a definite negative, creates a definite negative perception about a community. You go to any community and sometimes it's subconscious, but you just know that there's something that is lacking in that community. And some of the examples of some of the things that I, that this department's been working on that I have identified here that kind of addressed that issue is repairing the concrete on the front steps of the train depot, on Blooming Bank side of the train depot. For some time, there's, there's been a number of areas where that concrete has been broken and crumbled off. And it's all repaired. It's tough to repair concrete like that. And we might have to go back and repair it. Another thing, and some of these things are subtle sometimes, but in the central business district, these electric gas lamps have access panels on the base, at the base of them. And over the years, for whatever reason, many of them were, have been literally broken out, broken off. And what you're left with is exposed wires, which is obviously a public safety issue, but it's also an aesthetic issue. And sometimes, again, you don't necessarily notice that, but it, it's subconscious. We have about fifty percent of those replaced right now. We have another, you know, obviously fifty percent to do. And then another example is on the light standards going up Woodside. Those are concrete posts, but the access panels are either missing or, or taped up. There's like electrical tape around some of them or some other kind of tape. And quite frankly, it looks like the Dickens. Those are going to be somewhat more challenging to replace because the manufacturer of those concrete poles has gone out of business. And the, the original access panels are curved, probably cast aluminum. So we'll have to figure out some kind of material that's going to look pleasing and be durable to fit in those areas. Another part of the infrastructure that has a definite impact on the appearance of the village and again, perceptions, traffic signs. And that's something we've been, we do regularly. We've been doing it already this year, but we replace faded traffic signs, try to straighten them. We have some challenge keeping the street name signs on the, on the posts. I think it's a hardware issue, but the, you know, the, the signs are at an angle sometimes. And, but again, if you go into a community and you see street, uh, street signs that are crooked or faded or otherwise, you know, in, in bad repair, that, that leads to a certain perception. Some of the things that we're planning to do this year, again, going back to that perception of the village, we fully expect to be painting fire hydrants. We fully expect to paint the water tower. That's part of, that's a budgeted expense. And another budget expense is the installation of thermoplastic pavement markings throughout the village. Again, that's, that's budgeted, it's part of the capital budget. But those are much more durable. And one of the problems with the painting that we use is it's not very durable at all. I think we'll also, you know, this is somewhat dependent on the weather. If we have a warm, wet summer, we'll be doing a heck of a lot of grass mowing, and that's where the manpower goes then. If we have a hot, dry summer, the grass eventually stops growing. And then we move into more projects like this. But definitely, painting is always a, a good thing to be doing. Handrails around, around the train depot, window frames at the recreation center, recreation, parks and recreation offices, and the museum are, are both in a quite deteriorated condition. From the other greenscape or soft side of things, one of the things I'm, I'm doing is trying to nudge our department over to more focus, greater focus on landscape maintenance. It's significant for our community, of course, because we are a national landscape, landscape community. And I don't know that it's been the focus. I mean, there's, there's always the streets and there's so many other things to focus on. But I think that's, that's where we can make some adjustments and take more care and pay more attention to our, our greenscape. Some of the examples of the things we've been doing so far this year is this department is assumed responsible for the central business district planting beds. We're almost completely finished with maintaining those. That's really cutting the, the old growth and, and raking out the debris. Once the, once we're done with that, which should be any day now, literally, that manpower somewhat can be shifted down to Swan Pond, for example, and start that cleanup. That's been, I checked that, actually checked it today. And certainly, a lot of the area is dry enough, barring further rain, that we can start picking up, collecting debris and doing some erosion repair. Another significant thing that the Department of Public Works does is partner with the Olmstead Society and, and work with Landscape Advisory Commission. We have their, the Landscape Advisory Commission has just completed. They're, they're working on completing the master landscape plan, which you're all aware of. They just presented the triangle report. One of the activities, and this is really, should be really quite interesting, that's going to be undertaken soon, is the, Olmstead Society is going to take the recommendations from Landscape Advisory Commission for what's called Triangle T-53 and launch a replanting of that, like an overhaul of that triangle. Certainly, this department will be involved and support that activity. We have, we're also doing, we're with the Landscape Advisory Commission, experimenting with some alternate ground covers. There are some ground covers that would be an alternate to mulch bed around trees. And we have completed this year prescribed burns, which is an important part of maintaining the natural landscape. That's always weather-dependent. And it's almost like one of those things have, you know, the sun and the moon and the stars all have to line up. And, you know, we have to be flexible operationally so that we can, you know, jump on the, on the burn when the weather conditions support one. One of the things that, you know, not too glamorous or anything like that, but I've started a small-scale compost operation at the Department of Public Works. And we don't have space to do much. One of the things that we, we can take straw bales, I don't know if we could actually even take all of them, but some of the straw bales that are generated from the sled hill, we can take those and compost them and turn them back to the environment. It's one of those things, every little bit helps, you know? And certainly, compost is one of the best things that you can use to support plant growth. The things that, you know, some of the things that we're, will be doing this summer, of course, we mow seventy-five acres of turf grass. Hopefully, that's soon. That means that we'll have stopped snowing. But that's, that is the most dominant thing that the village does during, I mean, the Department of Public Works does during the, during the summer, summer months because it takes so much manpower. And you, you just have to keep on it, of course, for us, just like everybody's individual lawn. We'll also be, begin spraying for broadleaf weed control in the very near future. That will take several years to really eradicate the broadleaf weeds. There's, there's, the village went a number of years without spraying, and a lot of seed gets into the ground that, that's not affected by the spraying like this year might sprout next year. So we'll have to keep after it for a period of years before we have good eradication. And then just one other project, it's kind of a combination of the hard and soft scape. Over at Parking Lot Three, Park Place, we'll be doing, and this, hope to get this done relatively soon, but we'll be clearing the brush there and replacing the parking lot signs. And that will, should really spruce up that particular area. You know, the brush is kind of growing out into the parking spaces and the signs are deteriorated and they take a, a beating from the snowplowing sometimes and that sort of thing. So that's just really what I wanted to share with you is, you know, where we're kind of coming from as far as maintaining this public infrastructure. And clearly, a significant part of the streetscape or the landscape is, is forestry and trees. And unless you have any questions or suggestions, we can turn it over to Mike Collins to present a report on trees.
The signs that you, are you talking about the little ones that come up and say numbers on them?
Mm-hmm.
Why are, why are those necessarily necessary? Because you know how many spaces you have. You know how many permits you have.
Well, they get assigned to people. They, you know, they, they lease.
But if you lease them a space, it doesn't have to be space number six. It could be a space. They just have to first come, first served. You'd always, if you only have so many leases to give.
Yeah, there's a finite number of spaces.
There's only a finite number of spaces. It just seems like if you can, if you have thirty spaces, you only get thirty leases. So if, if someone's there that's not supposed to be there, they're going to be in space number six, no matter, you know? So if we, I mean, it just seems like.
Well, the reason why we do that is because the spaces are tied to a specific vehicle with the permit. In the event that, that we need to remove a vehicle to access it, we know who to contact. You could do the same thing by just running a plate, but it's easier and it's less time on the part of the police. If we already have those records, we can contact them directly. You could do it either way. I mean, it's.
It just, yeah, it just seems like one less thing we have to deal with.
You know, if there's sign, there's parking lot space numbers.
Right.
Big part of our, our landscape actually is parking lot signs.
Right.
I guess, I had a, I guess a comment and a question. And, you know, it probably, it probably applies to what our forester's going to talk about, too. So why don't we hear from you first, Mike, and then we can have, maybe have a more general conversation about this.
Okay. Well, I wanted to first start out by thanking the village president and village manager for the invitation to address the board tonight. Specifically, I'm looking to focus on reforestation, but it'll cover several aspects of forestry. I did throw together a nice little PowerPoint. It's short and brief. But I might need a little technical assistance in terms of getting the mood right. So in terms of moving through the slot.
So in terms of moving through the slides, am I just hit the set button? Okay, thanks. Well, you can hit the first one then. Thank you, Peter. So, you know, in terms of reforestation, which is really where this, this talk is geared towards, you know, there's several guidelines, considerations. I just wanted to start by briefing the board. Climate change, of course, being one of the first, unless you've been living underneath a rock, you know that, you know, a lot of scientists are talking about a potential shift in our climate from a hotter, or from a more temperate to a hotter, drier climate. This, of course, has an impact on reforestation in the way that the plants that we select today, we're hoping that these plants are viable 50 years down the road. So, for instance, a good example of this would be a maple tree. Typically, maples are very accepted around here in terms of planting. However, a lot of scientists believe 50 years down the road, maples will not be viable here anymore, which I know is, you know, pretty alarming to begin with. But these are all considerations and things that we're looking towards. Working with the Landscape Advisory, leaning out to, or reaching out to the Morton Arboretum, and we're trying to draft a species list that hopefully will be viable 50 years out. That way, we can use this as a guide. We're actually in process with that now. Species diversity, another large consideration, of course, the sins of our fathers who planted all those beautiful elms. Granted, it was a beautiful street. We had these monocultures of nothing but elm, and when Dutch elm disease went through, wiped out entire blocks of trees. What we're trying to do now, when we reforest, is plant many different species on one given block. That way, when you lose said species to another invasive bug, i.e. Emerald ashbore, you know, ideally, we'll have some trees left. So it's sort of a buffer in terms of our environment. Related to Emerald ashbore, that is almost the, well, it's the most significant factoid up there, so to speak, in the way that it's driving a lot of our removals, so it's going to lead to our reforestation moving forward. In terms of our planting sites, I have done some evaluation with a forestry intern last year. I've identified at least 150 minimum planting sites on our parkways. I'm primarily advocating for reforestation of our parkways. I believe that a majority of the parks, if you find an ash, you'll see a tree fairly close to it that's already been underplanted. I do believe some parks, like for instance Swan Pond, another park that may be very strongly impacted by Emerald ashbore, would be Indian Gardens. I believe those two parks are a bit of an exception to the rule, but a lot of our triangular parks, we've been talking with the LAC, and what the basic evaluation has been is that, you know, we could use an understory component, maybe a shrub or a, you know, red bud, a smaller statured tree, but we do have plenty of canopy trees in our parks, for the most part. Nursery availability is kind of the final real big X-factor. Number one, are the nurseries going to be able to provide the trees? We've actually been seeing that there have been some tree shortages. And I, like, for instance, this year, I'm already securing my fall planting now, because I know that there is that shortage. Also, the other factor is, does the nursery have what I want in the way of the species diversity, the climate change? You know, for instance, pecan tree is a real big tree that I'm advocating for in terms of planting. Not many nurseries carry it, or if they do carry it, it's not of the size that we need. And then lastly, I just wanted to take an opportunity here to thank the wonderful civic organizations and residents that we have here. Currently, we have about $10K, $10,000 in our tree donation fund, which will be expended this year. Either that or Jessica's going to yell at me. So, you know, we're going to expend about $10,000 from this fund. Garden Club gave $5,000 earlier this, or end of last year. You all recall Shannon Lang's initiative. That was a tremendous boost in terms of our tree planting. And then, of course, the Olmsted Society I work with annually, whether it's the Workdays that Ed referenced, or they donate very generously in terms of tree planting in the village. Next slide. So here's kind of the depressing part of the talk. Tree record-wise, you can see the green bars are the tree planting numbers, white bars are the removals, and then the red down below is our deficits. Moving up, out into 2009, we're fairly balanced in terms of our tree planting. And what I would suggest to the board is, in average year in Riverside, we would remove about 100 trees and replant about 100 trees. Of course, you know, as you probably figure, 2009 is when the bottom fell out, the economy dropped, the village had to make some hard choices. And also, I found that the residents were not participating as much in our cooperative tree planting program. Our orders were significantly reduced, and that's, of course, because everybody was tightening their belt. So those are obvious deficits that, you know, warrant, you know, well, we should address these deficits anyway. And then the final year in the graph there is 2013. We all know what's going on there. Emerald ashbore is starting to ramp up. The removals have increased significantly, and which leads me to the final slide and my recommendations. First recommendation and the primary, we, we need to address or increase funding for our reforestation efforts. In terms of our current budget year, next one. The, the gist is that this year, we have about 200,000 budgeted in our capital for ash tree removal. This is going to be a significant amount of tree removal. My hope is that the winter kill, which, I talked to Phil Nixon, he's University of Illinois Extension, he says that there's a good chance that some of the Emerald ashbore were killed. Unfortunately, it's not going to solve our problem long-term. It could slow some things down. However, I believe that with the 2012 drought, we will see some losses, you know, in terms of our tree population. What I would propose is to move forward with this year with the funds that we have in place. You know, essentially, whatever surplus I have, which I can determine this towards the end of the year, I would like to move those funds to reforestation. You know, our Emerald ashbore policy states that, you know, as I find trees that show symptoms, which are primarily woodpecker damage, we try and get these trees out in advance before it becomes a public liability. You know, safety is a very important function for Public Works. So, you know, I guess, long story short, the idea was that we would be hitting that nexus where we'd be removing a remainder of our ash trees. I, I think, per the policy, we should stay the course and evaluate things as the season progresses. If, if we don't need to remove every ash tree, why not hold on to that canopy and put those funds towards new plantings? And then in terms of the future, you know, I would recommend that, you know, that Peter and Ed and myself sit down and give the board some, you know, options in terms of replanting. Right now, we're on a tree cooperative system, which the residents drive to a certain extent our tree planting. One bone that I've always had to pick about that is, you know, there's a lot of gaps on parkways that remain unfilled, because the residents are sort of driving where the funds go, as opposed to the forester. You know, in my opinion, we could throw together several options, but that's one that I would advocate for, is that we start designating some funds to fill these gaps on the parkways. And at that, you know, if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer any...
Trustee?
Could you just go back to the, you, the winter and the Emerald ashbore?
Oh, well, basically, yeah, I probably was a little too brief on this, but we had sub-zero temperatures. You know, when you have sub-zero temperatures, it's going to have an impact on our insect population, one way or another, especially once it overwinter. With Emerald ashbore, according to this particular expert, he's an entomologist, Phil Nixon, great guy, you know, I addressed him about it and whether this could have an impact to our, you know, insect population. He said that there's a chance that 2/3 of the insects were killed off. However, that still leaves the 1/3. It may slow down the infestation, but it does increase exponentially. So it may buy us a little bit of time, but then I look at the drought of 2012, and I wonder how much of an impact with, you know, insects that are already stressing trees, then you have a drought, you know, which kind of ties into the climate shift. You know, I, I hate to put my money on it, so to speak, but the hope is that perhaps the infestation could have been slowed down a bit, which could buy us that time to start reforesting now, as opposed to, you know, looking at removal and then reforestation.
I had a couple of things. The, I went back and looked at our strategy session from February, and it struck me that, you know, we had a lot of emphasis upfront about governmental changes that we need to make, in an effort to kind of rekindle economic development. We had a list of things. And the last thing was what I would put into the general term of beautification. And, and it struck me, and I, and I think Director Bailey, you know, hit it on the, on the nose. I mean, all of the other things that we do in this town begin with beauty. Any kind of economic development initiatives we have, anything like that we're trying to do, depend on the uniqueness of our village and the beauty of our village. So it seems to me that, that, you know, when we had this list, it's almost like the, the most important thing is the last thing we talk about. And, and this is a habit, I think, and especially in modern times, that beauty always is an addendum. It's always the last thing to talk about. But in Riverside, beauty is primary. So, you know, I, I feel very strongly, and I think that, that our Public Works and Director and our forester are exactly the kind of people we need to make this happen. I mean, I'm constantly impressed by, one, your enthusiasm, and, and your progressive thinking about approaching these, these issues. I'm concerned about the, the level of resources that, that we're providing for this, because I really do think this is the most important thing. Public safety and aesthetics are the two things, most important things we can, we can try to leave for future generations. So I would just encourage both of you to, to make sure that you have from us what you need for success. Don't be bashful about it. Especially with regard, I mean, you know, we're getting hit hard with the Emerald ashbore in, in this winter. But all the, and I completely agree with what you said, Director Bailey, about those, those little things, like the little plates and the crumble corner of a step. Those, those kind of subliminal things have a big, big impact on, on the life and the quality of life of everyone here and the people who come to visit. So I would really like to see a concerted, long-term effort to put, to put these kind of issues at the, at the top of our list. And, and we have to accept the fact that we're going to have to put our money where our mouth is when it comes to budget time to address these things. So that's, and I also, and the other thing that, that I think is really important, too, is I do believe that it's important that a professional be in charge of organizing the plantings in our, in our village. You know, you, as our village forester, you should be the one making the decisions about where things are needed and where things go. The, the citizen, you know, assistance and initiatives are wonderful, but there has to be, there has to be a hand on the tiller, and that should be your hand. So moving forward, I would, I would encourage, encourage that as well. Are there any other questions or comments for our...
I have just a quick question. I heard you clearly say that if the Emerald bore invasion has somehow been slowed by the weather, then you'd like to take that money and put it into reforestation. Do you, even with that, is there enough money for 2013? 2014, what year? For 2014?
Well, you know, I believe so. You know, it's kind of, it's, it's really hard to say yes or no right at this point, because we're early on in the season. Once the ashes leaf out, I'll have a much better sense, you know. I'll have a better idea probably a month down the road even. But I think overall, the board has given me very adequate resources. When you look at the 200,000 for removals, that could remove pretty much the remaining ash situation in the village. We have about 550 left, per my inventory. So, you know, if we need to, we can address the liability side. If the insect has been slowed, we could certainly shift a little bit to reforestation, you know, but ultimately, it's a little too early to tell in the season. Come, you know, August, I think, is when we'd be looking to make the allocation.
Yeah, and Director Bailey said something. It's funny how the little things that happen that really are indicative of kind of a sea change. I mean, this, for, through the last, last several years, Riverside Springs Ahead, a volunteer organization that was founded by Terry Lynn Colloden, had been doing the maintenance, the, both the spring and fall cleanup in, in our central business district. This year, quite rightly, I think, our Public Works Department took that over. And I, I personally feel very strongly that as important and as essential as volunteers are, they should not be tasked with the routine maintenance of our village. That is something that we all have, have a responsibility to do. And they've done an excellent job. And, and thank you, this past weekend, to Mike, Terry Lynn got us out there bright and early on Saturday morning, and she had bought a lot of small plants, and we transplanted them into gallon pots. And Public Works are having their folks take care of them now for the next four to six weeks. And when they get nice and grown and, and healthy, we're going to have a planting day over at the corner of Forest and Long Common, which I think is a much more appropriate use of our volunteer, our volunteer efforts. You know, it's a discreet project that has a large impact, and, and it's kind of a value added that our volunteers can give. So I'm, I'm very appreciative of the work that the two of you guys do, and, and look forward to doing even more in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spatney?
Of course. Well, you know how I moan and groan about the trees all the time. I thought that chart was very illustrative. 234 removals. I mean, you got to come up with 25 and 50 and $75,000 the next three years to put into the, into the tree replacement plant, above whatever you got in there now. Because you got to get back to this. This is long-term growth. These things go in for 50 years and more. And all those numbers there, there was a deficit every year of 50 trees, 60 trees. See, so this has been a long-time building. I came back here in 2005, I said, "Where the hell do trees go?" You know, from when I was here. This is not the village in the forest. There is no forest. You know, you can go to LaGrange and drive down those historic district streets, you can see the forest. It's not here anymore. You got to have, this stuff's got to grow, and it, and it's going to take, you know, you put them in, and they're, these guys, right, little, little twigs. And we don't see them for, I'm never going to see them. So this is, I'm not doing this for me. But people, you got to put money in that can't be touched. It's got to be like forest preserve land. You can't get hold of it, you can't take it back, right? You need to put money in, and it, and it progresses. And if they don't spend it this year, because they're busy or they're doing something else, that's good. But they got it for next year. There's all kinds of streets up at the north end. You can go three, four houses, and there isn't a tree on the parkway. You know, now, I don't know whether people don't want them or anything. Village ought to put them in and, and around in these parks. And then you've got this extra deal of who's going to fix the stone infrastructure in the Swan Pond. I keep coming all the time and saying this, but you know, there's, there's $50,000 down there if there's a penny of work to do, if it's going to be do, done correctly. And walking around with the, with the, you know, the Army Corps and, and somebody else is fine, but it's still going to take $50,000 to do it right. Because that, that stonework and all that stuff should be replaced to the standard of the CCCs, not to some Army Corps standard, which is all crap. So, you know, please think about this, and, and when you go to your budget meetings and all that stuff, remember that, that the trees need to be replaced systematically, progressively, and continually. And it's, we got a long backhoe to keep up with. There's, that little chart he had up there probably had 400 deficit or more, right? Maybe, maybe a lot more. So, and, and these guys want to do it, and, you know, they, they work here, they, they can't necessarily say, but, but I don't, I don't think any of the past boards, any of the past boards have met the obligation of tree planting in this town, going back since 2005, when I came back here. I, I think that there's always been a more of a deficit that has always been fallen behind, and, and because the trees that we're removing now are, are the big mature trees, you know, it's really becoming evident. But you won't catch up on this for a long time. And, and what can you bequeath, you know? Not traffic signs, trees. That's what you can bequeath to the people who are going to move here. That's why people move here. Not because you've got 19 policemen and, and a bunch of traffic signs where you probably don't need them, but where you, where you, they move here because of the beauty of the place. That's what draws people here. And, and it's the greenery and, and how nice it looks. And... And it's the greenery and how nice it looks. And by the way, if you want to find a guy to make you those plates for the bottoms of the thing, Joe Gabrick, Riverside Works, he'd be able to make you those, or something. Anyway, put some dough in. Huh? I mean, you got the money, you know, it's in the reserve. You got the money. You could save 200,000 tonight. You could do it, wouldn't take anything, doesn't do anything for us in the bank. Got to get the trees in the ground, give it to these guys. Okay? Please.
I would classify it that that is preaching to the choir. We do, we have no ordinances or resolutions tonight, no further considerations. Did anyone have any new business they wanted to discuss? We do have a need for an executive session this evening to discuss the sale of real property owned by the public body, so I'd ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session. No action will be taken, we shall not reconvene. Motion by Ms. Collins, second by Ms. Sussman. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman. Trustee Collins. Trustee Leal. Trustee Collins. Trustee Bowlen.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.